Good evening and welcome to Town and Riverhead Planning Board. Today is Thursday, March 3rd, 2022. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could continue standing, please, we'd like to have a moment of silence for the people of Ukraine. Thank you. Okay, this evening we have one public hearing. It's the proposed drive-in restaurant and retail site. I'd like to open up the public hearing, please. Kim and Judd.
Hi, good evening, Kim, Blythe Judd, 737 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, for the applicant. I have also here Wayne Muller from Muller Engineering, he's the traffic engineer. And I also have Anthony Stan Canelli, he's from the Laurel Group, he's also an engineer. And yesterday we handed in because the planning board had asked us to do traffic counts for the Sonic at the Shirley location. And Mr. Muller's office did do that, and we submitted that yesterday, and he just wanted to, I think the board has copies of it now, and he just wanted to review it with you. So I'm gonna, this is Wayne Muller.
Good evening. Wayne Muller, Robinson and Muller Engineering, our offices are at 50 Elm Street, Huntington, New York. As Judd indicated, we prepared a brief analysis dated March 2nd, 2022, and that was really performed in response to the staff report that was completed back in November of 2020. And in that document, they indicated that because of the Shirley, Sonic had recently opened, it would be prudent to obtain some traffic count data at the Sonic Shirley and then compare it to what was being used in the reports that we had previously submitted when the project was a Sonic. And just to cut to the chase, appended to my report is summary, Table 1, which really kind of tells the story. So we went out, there's four different, five different columns, and on the top, each one is labeled, so we've got the different site plans that went through iterations of this project. And then, location C is the Sonic and Shirley, D is the North Babylon Sonic on 231, and then E is the East Meadow facility, which is across from us in Elm Park. And as you can see, we went out on February 11th and 12th, because it was, it actually was a beautiful day, both days were, the 11th was like 55 degrees, and then the 12th was over 60. Reason why I know that, it's my birthday. I was actually over at Fire Island doing a nice hike, but, so we figured that because of the fact that the Sonic and Shirley has those drive-in stalls, if it weren't there when it was 30 degrees out, people wouldn't use the drive-through stalls, I know that, I wouldn't use it. So because of the fact that the temperature was above 50 and 60, it's beautiful and sunny, we felt that the people would actually use them, and they did. So as you can see, in that table, the data that we collected at the Sonic and Shirley, which is in column C, compared very favorably to the data that we had presented in our updated July, excuse me, June 2020 traffic report, which utilized industry-standard traffic generation data prepared by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I think you guys probably heard a lot of us traffic engineers talk about the ITE and various different rates and...
What is that acronym?
Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE.
Okay, yeah, I see. And what's the TPH?
Excuse me?
TPH.
Trips per hour. Yeah, so you could see that at lunchtime, we would anticipate 92 trips, we analyzed 133, 88, and the weekday PM, we analyzed 84, and then 127 on Saturday, and we analyzed 189. So what we found is that the data that we collected at the Sonic and Shirley was comparable to the other locations that we looked at, that being in Babylon and Town of Hempstead, and also that it compared favorably to the data that we used from the ITE. So the ITE data, which we consider to be our bible to estimate the quantity of traffic generated by various different land uses, and a fast food restaurant is one of them, is valid. So the results of our analysis that we prepared back in June 2020 is valid, as indicated by the information contained in the staff report. We also looked at the parking and the queuing, that information is summarized on Table 3 and 4. And the maximum queue that we saw was, I believe, five. At lunch on Friday, all of the times it was, excuse me, and dinner on Saturday, five cars at 8 o'clock. So there's the people using the drive-through at the Sonic and Shirley, relatively, there was relatively no waits, five car queue. How many cars do we have in queue at this location? I think it's quite, 12. So we have, we're showing 12, we don't anticipate any queuing problems on this site if we were to use the Sonic and Shirley as a model. We also found that the parking on-site there was relatively minimal. Excuse me, the reason for that being in the Shirley site is that the Shirley site's connected to a larger, to Elm Park, so it's a larger shopping center. What we did find was that the employees were probably being told to park in the shopping center, which we observed five, four or five to six cars of the employees, so we would anticipate that there would be no parking issues on this site, which fully complies with the town code as far as the number of required parking spaces if this project were to be a Sonic in the future. And that's really all I have to say, if there's any questions, I would be more than happy to answer. I did, three, uh, three is the, excuse me, Table 3 is the number of vehicles that have been parked in the various different parking stalls, and we call them the standard parking stalls and the drive-in stalls. So here you've got a maximum of 20, four in the standard stalls, 16 vehicles at the drive-in stalls, and then on Saturday, it's 19, four vehicles in the standard stalls, 15 in the, in the, the, uh, drive-up stalls, which, which in our opinion are actually, would be considered to be seats, right, sitting in your car, not in the restaurant. So the Sonic functions like other fast food restaurants. There was no large queues or any problems that developed. I know that when the Deer Park facility first opened many years ago, there were lines of cars on 231, and I think that was really because Sonic was more of a novelty, but now you've got the East Meadow facility, there's one in Smithtown, on Middle Country Road, opposite the Smith Haven Mall, Shirley facility, I think the novelty's worn off, in my opinion.
So on average, there was about eight to 12 cars at most times during the course of the day?
Well, yeah, I mean, the maximum in the standard stalls was four, and then in the drive-up, the drive-in stalls was 16. So 20, 20 cars max, but that's including the drive-in stalls, not, this, this site really performs to the standard parking spaces, as you can see on the site plan. There'll be plenty of parking on this property, also plenty of queuing, and the driveway volumes, as indicated in the analysis that we prepared, will not create any traffic congestion in and around the project site. We believe, based on our assessment of the Shirley site, also East Meadow and Deer Park and Babylon, that the site will function properly, not create any situations encountered on 58.
What about the retail building to the west?
The way we analyze that, using retail statistics, again in the ITE manual, I do not believe that there's a tenant for that facility at this point in time, so we use the ITE statistics to, to generate that activity, and that's contained in our updated June 2020 report. So again, it was all analyzed as one unit, the retail and the fast food were combined and analyzed in the, in the documentation that we prepared, submitted some time ago.
Is Sonic back in the picture? A while ago, we had testimony that indicated that might, they might possibly have backed out.
They did. As of a few weeks ago, they have expressed interest in the site again, they are negotiating with the property owner and waiting to see how the public hearing, they may even have somebody on Zoom or here in the audience, but they do want to see how the public hearing goes, and, but they are still interested in obtaining the site. And if, if, if they don't, it is still going to be a fast food restaurant with a drive-through.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone that would like to come up and comment on this public hearing?
You think, you think you're good?
We have a person, that's Diana Muvolo. Diana, did you want to, no, just shaking your head down.
No, okay.
For the record, could someone, one of you get up and just explain for the record what the project entails?
Do you want him to walk to the...
No, I'm, right, right, cannot be picked up from the microphone over there, that's our script, our board, okay.
All right, team effort here. Good evening all, Anthony Stan Canelli, Furnaces Engineering, also the Laurel Group, offices in Ilandia, New York. I might be a little leaning towards the civil end, because I'm a civil engineer, so I'll explain the site. Yep, it's located on Old Country Road and one lot west of, east of Osborne Avenue. The site is designed with 52 parking stalls, there's 45 required. Currently, there, it's one-way circulation around the site, it's two curb cuts, one on Old Country Road, one on Osborne Avenue. There are out, there's outdoor seating, 74 seats altogether, 54 outdoor, 20 indoor. There's also a 5,000 square foot retail building on the shopping center, adequate parking, nice big buffer of landscaping in the front with a nice burn, built up three feet, that you see on a lot of other retail fronts along Old Country Road. There's also wetlands to the west, we had to stay out of the setbacks and go through and get DEC permits for that, which are already acquired. We are currently working with the sewer district and the water district to get approvals. We are connecting to the sewer, which is on the south side of Old Country Road, we have to bore under the street to get there. We're also designing another manhole so that a future tenant on the corner could also connect to the sewer, which is a benefit to, to the area, to the, to the properties. What I like to show, I guess, you know, these are just like lines to everybody, but we have a nice landscape behind it, and some color. They did go out of their way to try to plant very nice plantings and shrubs and flower and trees, evergreens. Sorry. Oh, this is the lattic plan, do have full dark sky compliant lighting in accordance with town road. So this is the perimeter plantings, it will be set up three feet, so it's gonna block some view of the parking lot from, from the road. I don't know if you guys are familiar with, maybe the Walmart of Old Country Road, I also designed that, but over the front, so.
I like Walmart.
And it continues all around the site. Nice landscaping, enough parking, yeah, plenty of queue, 12 parking spaces hooking up to the sewers.
Sure, if you could just speak into the mic, because it's a public hearing, we have to have it underway.
Yeah, plenty of queuing, very nice landscaping, hooking up to sewers, water's available, preserving a lot of natural area that is adjacent to the wetlands, again, we have DEC approval.
Do you require any variances for the project?
No.
Currently grading as well?
No, no, they redesigned it initially when they had the canopies, they required some variances, and they removed a, there was a, like a cooler, a walk-in freezer on the north end of the property, they have removed those, so currently, the application does not require any building from the CBA.
Could you just, with, with a pencil or with your finger, just point out how traffic will enter and get around to make any order, or if it's takeout, and from both, from both entrances?
Sure.
So if you're coming off of Old Country Road, you can make a right in, you can come around. There's one-way circulation, and there's angle parking. You come up here, this is where the 12-car queue starts for the drive-through, the, the drive-through goes all around the road, all right? Here's the pickup window, so you have a substantial row of queue that fits 12 cars. From this point, you would continue on the one-way circulation, come back out, right, turn all, you know, back onto Old Country Road, off of Osborne. You would have to come into the site on the right side, circulate around, right? So just in case this queue ever stacks up, I mean, we did an exhibit, and I could show you later, actually, we showed it at the last hearing, but the way we designed it, the queueing, you would have to wrap around the site twice before it ever got back and backed up onto Osborne, which was a substantial number of, of cars, which would probably never happen. We have enough drainage, actually, we have a surplus of drainage, because we designed it in accordance with the DEC standards, so the site meets the 100-year storm event, which is almost more than double than the town's requirement for drainage. That's, that's really it. Any questions?
Thank you.
I would just add, because he did mention the queuing, and to just address any concerns, you know, when I, when we speak about queuing and the potential for, you know, backups, I think of the Taco Bell on Old Country Road, I see it all the time when I go out during lunch, that queuing lane, that drive-through was right along 58, so I mean, you've only got five or six cars at that order point before it backs up. This point, they did an exhibit, based on the traffic flow, it would need to be 23 cars before it got to Old Country Road, so I, I would not anticipate, you know, based on their traffic counts, would not anticipate even on their busiest day that you'd ever have that issue where you're backing up into 58.
43 cars from, from Osborne to back up, that's that blue line.
Yeah, I was talking, yeah, so on 58, before, I'm talking about, because when you're on, right now, the Taco Bell's on to 58, but yeah, because there was a concern earlier as well about blocking the Riverhead ambulance barn just at the north of the site, so you would, there would need to be 43 cars, like he said, before it would back up to that ambulance barn, so unless they're giving away bags of money with the food, I don't see that happening.
Didn't we also visit, Greg, the possibility of prohibiting turns out of there onto Osborne, where you could only go in one direction? Didn't we, didn't we talk about something like that? This way we would discourage anyone from sitting out there on Osborne?
Well, so the, when you say, meaning exiting the site from Osborne? So I mean, the exit onto Osborne, you could make a left out of the site, or you couldn't...
You can go north?
Yes, you can.
I thought we visited, I thought we discussed something, but I couldn't remember what it was.
Yeah, I, I thought, I think maybe there was some confusion about where the, how they were coming in, maybe it would have been an issue if it queued, it would prevent people from getting in.
Right.
But right now, the entrance, if you're coming in off of Osborne, the entrance is the northerly curb cut, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an issue.
So on Old Country, they restricted left turns out.
Can you exit onto, can you exit onto Osborne?
Yes.
And you can make a left or a right onto Osborne.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have another person that joined us? I've had 11.9, did I see a gentleman, did you want to speak about the fast food restaurant on Route 58? You're not, you got it on mic yourself.
Greg, do you want to ask, if anybody else... Does anybody else in the Zoom room, would they like to speak on the application? If you are, I believe you can unmute yourself.
Okay, well, seeing that there's no one to come up, we will...
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, vote, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next up, we're moving on to our discussion items, and the first one this evening is Pecanic Farms' major subdivision. That is going to be with Greg.
I don't know if the applicants want to come up to the table, I think it might be easier rather than having them switch out the podium, but this is a continued discussion of a proposed major subdivision application, seeking to subdivide an existing vacant 9.57-acre parcel of land located on Pecanic Bay Boulevard. The property is located in the RA40 zoning district. We have been entertaining this application now for a little over two years, we're trying to wrestle through the yield map phase. The applicants have submitted a now revised yield map dated December 22nd, 2021. We have a yield map right now, it shows a total of seven lots on the subject property, shows an area for drainage, shows a roadway with a cul-de-sac. We did receive some engineering comments on the yield map, we do have Vinnie Guardiello here, who's the town's consulting engineer. So we're here for a further discussion, I don't know if the applicants would like to kind of lead off on the...
Sure, good evening, Martin Finnigan, I represent the applicant here with Doug Adams from Young &amp; Young. So we, yes, we have for two years been trying to obtain yield map approval. This is a 10-acre parcel, we, it's one-acre zoning, the original yield map was submitted with nine lots, it has through various discussions been reduced down to a seven-lot yield map that we believe is completely compliant with the town code requirements for a yield map at this stage. It seems that we are getting into issues that are beyond the scope of yield map approval, and obviously, we have a long way to go, we have to get through sketch, preliminary plat, we have plenty of time to discuss, but some of the issue, the issues principally seem to be related to the need to grade the site. And, you know, at this point, you know, fortunately, we've gotten a little bit of pattern where we've made submissions and we, we just got the comments last evening from the town engineer, fortunately Doug was able to put together a response, I don't know whether the board has had the opportunity to see that or review it yet, I tend to doubt it, so I have copies to hand up to you for that. I'm also gonna hand up again, I don't, there was a previous submission in October that was submitted in response to the early, to Greg's last staff report, and I just want to hand that up again, because there seems to be, we just want to make sure that the board has all of the comments that are coming from our engineers, so that they can be reviewed, because it seems that some of the comments, the comments are focusing on just the, the map itself, and rather than this dialogue that we've tried to have to address some of the concerns that have been raised. So, you know, you know, I understand that the, the board is very busy, the staff is very, very busy, but we're hoping to get into a situation where we can have a discussion, a dialogue of, of issues before we get, before we get here, so that this process can be more productive. Obviously, my client wants to move the project forward, and we, we are stuck in just determining how many, how many lots, it's a simple determination of, of yield here, we understand, the, the yield map is not, the sketch plan is not what we're seeking to build or develop, it's a yield map, so...
But a yield map basically says, if nothing else happens, this is what...
Exactly, and I think that's...
It could be built this way.
Exactly, and I think that's the direction that, that I want to make to the board and the points that I want to make. And, and I think it's the point the planning staff has tried to relay through the beginning process. With a yield map, or I'll refer to it as a standard plat, is the plat that this board says, you know what, they could build this, they could go out and they could strut this, and that's what, in essence, if this board says, we accept this, they could come to this board and say, this is what we want to do. Now, we've heard that that's not really what the intent is, however, there is nothing within our code that mandates a cluster on this, even though that's what has been represented through this project. I believe in reducing this from nine lots to seven lots, do I personally think you can get seven lots and an acceptable yield map? Without a doubt. And, and I've been pushing since my review here, that hey, throw your drainage area in the southeast corner of the property, in essence, right here. And you look at these lots, there are 79,000, you look at this lot that's 68,000, those lots only need to be 40,000 square feet. You can, in essence, take this whole stretch of land, right here, and create an area that's almost 80,000 square feet, or actually, nah, it would be half of that, say, an area that could support a recharge area that's only a foot deep. And the bottom of this cul-de-sac, or the elevation of this cul-de-sac... this cul-de-sac, or the elevation of this cul-de-sac, would be down a foot higher as opposed to seven feet. And in the event this thing was to fail from an engineering standpoint, it's not impacting these lots that are being proposed. So, as far as reviewing yield, it's a combination of yield and sketch plan. It's kind of, hey, this is how many lots this property could yield. These are the standard plats that meet our standards of the code. And as far as the town or Riverhead code, when it comes to things that are subtracted from yield, you know, like, I think the code talks about a drainage area. The code talks about some bluff face and stuff along those lines. Typically, and I'm not comparing, obviously, we're in the town of Riverhead, so I'm not talking about codes that, that pertain to this project. But, you look at other municipalities in this area, they exclude, basically, some codes exclude slopes of 15%. Some include various other things. We're not basing these comments on the fact that you should be excluding areas. What we're saying is, is that there are general provisions within the subdivision standards. And I put that one provision that says, when you build a road, you should primarily try to follow the natural topography of the land. Well, when you come in with a yield map, or I should say, a standard plat, and you're telling me in order to build your drainage design as per this plan, I got to raise my cul-de-sac up seven feet, and I've got three lots that are downgrading from that, that are seven feet on average lower than me, I mean, I find that to be unacceptable. And that's where my comments are coming from. I'm not here, my comments are not to sit here to try to squash the yield on this lot, on this parcel. But, in an effort to kind of say, all right, these guys are at seven lots. I think that with a couple, drawing the lines a little bit differently here, we could look at a standard plat and yield and say, yeah, this is acceptable. And, and toe with that, give us your sketch, your preferred sketch. I think the code talks about giving a minimum of two sketches. And I believe initially, we saw that with the initial submission. And, and I think that's really what we're chilling on. It's, it's, I guess what I'm coming on with this board is, when you adopt a resolution relative to this project, it should be, we accept this standard plat, which has a yield of X amount, and we want or prefer this sketch plan. Where you potentially run into issue is where you're just approving a yield map or a standard plat, adopt a resolution, and now you're still not beyond that yield sketch phase. The objective here is to have a standard plat that works, a sketch plan that is your preferred, and we get these guys into the preliminary subdivision phase of this project.
Why was the drainage area placed where it is right now?
We're going to produce a map that meets what Vinnie just talked about next week. I don't want to get into an engineering, you know, thing. It's a yield map. We're going to, we're going to produce a map, a yield map, that generally outlines what he just said, and the cluster, you know, the two cluster plans next week.
But, with cluster plans?
Yeah.
Or just a yield map?
No, we want to see a cluster plan too.
Because Vinnie's talking about, you know, that the next step should be, you know, the resolution should just take care of all of it and you can move on. Right?
Well, I'd like to see you guys move on. It has been two years and there should be, you know, something at this point that, you know, a yield map usually doesn't sit around as long as this one has. So, I think there's been very direct with what the town would like to see with the drainage and the grading. And I would appreciate it if you guys were able to come up with something else.
Is there any chance, once you have the approved map, we'll sell it to county or town?
That's not something we've discussed at this point. So, yeah, yeah, it was meant to be for the family. So, right, look, I appreciate the, we will definitely come back with, and then hopefully, we can have the, you know, continue the dialogue with Greg and with Vinnie before your next date. I think that's been just a concern is, you know, being able to have something before you, before we get here to consider. So, we're not just saying, okay, let's do it next time, each time we get here. We'd really like to stay in touch. So, I'm sure we can submit what's requested and, and hopefully, get to the next step here sooner rather than later.
Be counted for the next...
I'm sorry?
Be counted for the earliest possible next opportunity.
Next meeting is on St. Patrick's Day.
What?
It's an afternoon meeting.
Okay.
You can wear your green.
The town attorney and I need a conference on that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Good break.
Let's move on to our second discussion, Browning Hotel Properties LLC Parking Lot Expansion Site Plan. Hi, Mr. Cuddy, how are you?
All right. So, this is just a quick update. We had last year, the Browning Hotels LLC had submitted a site plan application to expand their existing parking lot. Right now, they've got about, I believe it's 249 parking stalls. I think they're looking to expand it in the neighborhood of 309. Reason being is that the, right now, when the hotel has events going on, the owner of the hotel has found the need to bus people into the site from off-site. So, they're looking to expand the parking lot. It's going to consist of cutting into the berm that's located along 58. They are going to need to export material from the site. They're going to reconfigure the landscape islands within the parking lot. They will need to reconfigure the existing lighting configuration. So, we did have a, the zoning board actually held a public hearing because of the reduction in the landscaping and the increase in the impervious surface. The application required two variances from the zoning board for exceeding impervious coverage and not meeting the minimum contiguous landscape coverage. So, they received that relief from the zoning board of appeals. We have received comments from the town engineer that they will need to satisfy before the issuance of any building permits or signature of milars. Given the scope of the work of the application, considering the fact that it has been heard and there was a public hearing before the zoning board of appeals, and really the fact that the only neighbors that they've got on this site per se is the New York State DOT yard to the east, you've got the Long Island Expressway directly to the west, and Tanger across the street, given the fact that they're not adding anything to the building, and it's really just an expansion of the parking lot, recommended an administrative approval. So, I do have a resolution before the board. There are a number of conditions, again, that would need to be satisfied before signature of the milars or issuance of any building permits.
So, this meets the criteria of administrative approval?
They're not adding to any buildings. They're not adding any floor area. They're not really changing any kind of use. They're not intensifying the use or changing it. So, in the board's discretion, I mean, if you would like to have a public hearing, that would be within purview, being that it's been heard by the zoning board. I don't think there was many comments made at the zoning board. It just seems like it would be...
Okay, it meets the criteria. I'm okay with it.
We've had two hearings so far. We've had a hearing for the zoning board that was in September. We had another hearing for this board to approve the subdivision, two lots, in November last year. No one appeared at either hearing. I posted the notices. There were only six people who got notice anyway. And we sent those out twice, and no one appeared.
They were at the hotel.
Mr. Browning is here, as you know, and also Doug Adams is here. If there are any questions.
Doug had a question. There's a line on the, or a drainage line on the drawing that appears to drain out into 58. Now, why is that?
So, it doesn't flood the parking lot.
Pardon?
So, the parking lot doesn't flood if the drainage capacity is exceeded.
Well, I can understand that. But, the way I always look at any site, you have to contain gorgeous stuff onsite somehow.
Well, not all of it. You don't have to contain all of it. You have to contain two inches with the town code. And then you can overflow. We're trying to control the overflow so it's not just flooding the parking lot or running over the, you know, we're not going to have a berm now, so we don't want it to run over the berm. And if, I don't think it's ever exceeded capacity anyway. I don't know if any time in that parking lot is...
Has the county yet said okay on it?
No, we haven't been to the county on this.
Just, just...
I mean, this is, this is...
Just exploring. Suppose they say no.
What's that?
Exploring. Suppose they say no, you can't have it. And you have to do something else.
Can we ask them?
I can't hear the question. Yes.
I, I did refer, I, I sent a 239F referral to the county on this latest plan. So, we'll get comments back from them. I mean, if that's unacceptable to them, one of the conditions in the approval is that they need to get a permit from the Suffolk County DPW. If the DPW is okay with it, if they choose not to...
Well, that's what I've been just exploring. Suppose they say no. Because you said that you need this in case you have more than the normal rainfall. What would happen?
Yeah, I mean, that, that...
Just flood the parking lot?
I'd have to cross that bridge when we get to it because that's not normally what happens. Normally, what happens is you, if your capacity is exceeded that you're required to provide, then it just overflows into public highways. That's normally how it goes. It just isn't broadcast.
Did you happen to see the comments from the town engineer?
Yes, I got those yesterday.
Oh, all right. And any problems there at all?
No.
Because I know he mentioned the same question about an 18-inch going into a 6 coming from an 18.
Oh, that's a different question. He was asking about the pipe sizes and why they're smaller or bigger. And I can explain that to him. We can, we can satisfy these questions.
The drain, the irrigation, that, that seems to be, because I see we've got water lines going all over the place. But, up in the, what is it, the northwest corner, it looks like you've got one irrigation spot. Is that right? Where the water line goes in?
I'm not sure what you're talking about. We have, I'm not sure what those water services are for, but they're not...
There is a fire hydrant in that northwest corner.
There's a hydrant back there. There's a fire line behind the building.
Oh, okay.
That...
Yeah. Typically, irrigation lines, like internal site irrigation lines, are not shown on site plans. They'll show water mains, fire hydrants, you know, main services. But, irrigation lines are typically not shown.
Irrigation across the back of the building anyway, you know, against the wall there.
And I mean, is that, that front berm along 58, is that irrigated?
Yeah, everything is right now.
So, if anything, the reduction in that berm cutting into it would reduce the amount of landscape area that would need to be irrigated?
And you probably have to install new irrigation, I assume, based on the cuts that you're going to have to make.
That's right.
Right.
All right. Yep. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to 40 Manor Lane Minor Subdivision.
So, this is just a quick ask from the board. Back in April of last year, this board approved a two-lot minor subdivision at 40 Manor Lane in Jamesport. That application subdivided a 0.83-acre parcel and created, had two separate building lots. That property had two existing single-family residences on it at the time. At this point, the applicant is still working on getting health department approval. So, the, Mr. Cuddy submitted a request for an extension of subdivision approval to allow for them to get health department approval, get the map signed and filed with the county clerk. All the facts and circumstances of that property are the same as they were. There's still the two family, the two single-family residences. So, this is just an ask for an extension of time for that.
When did we put this?
April of 2021.
They didn't come in. I can explain. I didn't...
So, it's only been a year?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the interim property was sold from one person to another. The second person, the now-owner, thought that since they had subdivision approval, all he was concerned with was the health department. So, he never really looked at anything. About three weeks ago, he came into my office and said, I understand that maybe I missed something. And he finally read what was there. And then he realized that he had missed asking for an extension. So, that's why we're asking for it now. And we're not asking that you put it forward. We're saying we're taking it from the time it should have been in October, April. And if we have to come back, we would ask again because we're still in the health department and they'd probably be there for a few months. But, that's what happened. It was just an oversight.
So, you'd come back, you'd have to come back to us in April again for another six?
Yes, I would. Because that's, I'm just taking the 180 days from the time it was until now.
Understandable.
It was just, it was a mistake.
Okay. Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuddy.
I can tweet, I mean, I did put August. I kind of maybe misinterpreted the, yeah, I wrote it 180 days from the date of adoption of the resolution.
So, he has it as August right now? Okay.
Not April.
Not April.
Which is it?
Well, it could be whatever you, whichever you want.
I mean, I don't, I don't see any harm, you know, the, the way the resolution is written, it's 180 days from the date of adoption. So, I mean, it, you know, it really, if anything, just gives them additional time to satisfy the conditions and file the map.
So, instead of April, it would be up to...
He's going to August.
Right now, it would expire in August. If they haven't completed the conditions, they would just come back and ask for another extension.
Sounds good. Okay. We have, next up, 48 Third Street Townhomes.
Just a quick update on a site plan application proposing to demolish an existing dilapidated residence and construct a two-story, four-unit townhouse with a footprint of 2,040 square feet, a total floor area of 4,116 square feet, along with related site improvements. The board issued a negative declaration for the application back in September of last year. The application required some relief from the zoning board. They needed relief for the two-way drive aisle, which was 20 feet. Required was 24 feet. The proposed rear yard setback is 11 feet 9 inches, where the town code requires 25 feet. So, they did receive that relief from the zoning board by appeal number 22-2, with determination dated February 24th of this year. So, now that they've received the necessary relief, the board can schedule a public hearing on the application.
Okay. And the last discussion item is 1530 North Country Road.
So, again, just a quick update. This was an administrative site plan application which proposed to add a 200-square-foot addition to an existing office building located at 1530 North Country Road in Wading River. The building itself was kind of an irregularly-shaped U-shaped building. The, the operator of the site, his employees were kind of complaining that they had to leave the building to get to the back portion of it. So, he was basically just connecting those two sections. They did require relief from the zoning board for a parking variance. Required parking was nine stalls. The proposed parking, the site plan proposes seven parking stalls. So, they received that relief from the zoning board by determination dated February 24th of this year. The ARB reviewed the application. It does fit the criteria for administrative site plan review. So, I did speak with the applicant. He requested... plan review, so I did speak with the applicant, he requested to-
Is there a guardrail between the building and the street? Because that thing is literally right on the street.
I don't believe so.
I'm happy more than that would be.
Yeah, so I figure it would be required.
No, so there isn't, the curb, the building is set, offset 1.8 feet from the property line, and then it's probably another, maybe four feet from the curb max, so it's about five or six feet off the curb. There is no guardrail right now. There is a, kind of, they are proposing a planter box on the corner of North Wading River Road and North Country Road. If there would, if there would be a building strike or an accident, based on the way North Country Road kind of curves down, that I would think would be the location that would be most likely to be hit, so they are proposing a planter there to offer some protection for the building.
I'm just thinking the highway department should put a guardrail between, I don't know, just my thought.
I mean, we can, we can make that recommendation to the highway department.
Yeah, that's fine.
And maybe a couple of hollards too, you know, I think that would be a good addition to that.
But that's the decision of the highway department, right?
Yeah, I mean, the planning board can make the recommendation, you know, I know this board's made several recommendations to highway department and town board in the past, but we can make the recommendations. Thank you.
Very well then. That will now bring us to the public comments. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to come up and comment on any of this evening's resolutions?
I'll move resolution number 17, the Browning Hotel Properties LLC Parking Lot Expansion. So moved?
Second.
Vote?
Aye. Aye. Voting day. I saw some of the comments in the resolution that the town engineer put down, and I really felt that I would like to see some of those before that, before this thing would be approved, just to make sure that everything's going to flow right. Plus the discussion on the drainage, I was thrilled with, and we haven't gotten comments back from county or from DPW, so that's the reason of voting no.
Okay, well, we have four, four ayes and one no. Resolution adopted.
I'll move resolution 2022-18 for 40 Manor Lane LLC granting an extension of time for the planning board. Second.
Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution adopted.
I'll move resolution 19, authorizes to, authorizes the chairperson to send a memo to the town board recommending that Sam Schwartz as an outside consultant to assist the planning board in reviewing the Calvertin Industrial Subdivision.
Second. Just a conversation, I believe that will be borne by the applicant, is that correct?
That is correct. SECR does allow the municipality to charge an applicant for the environmental review, so that would be done at no cost to the taxpayer.
Okay, vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Number four, 48 Third Street Townhouses Resolution, schedule a public hearing on a site plan application, seeking approval to construct a two-story, four-unit townhouse development of related site improvements.
Second.
Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll move resolution number 21, 1530 North Country Road, requiring administrative site plan approval, so moved.
Second.
Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comments?
Do we have any public comments this evening?
I'll move the minutes of February 3rd.
Meeting, minutes adopted, other business?
Yeah, well, we have two, two of those.
Seventeen.
All of them, okay.
So you're moving them both to the chamber?
I'll move the minutes of the 17th, February 17th.
Second motion?
Minutes adopted. Other business?
Other business, yes, Jeff or Brad or somebody. Did we get any clarity on the amount of apartments downtown? Because we know we have over 500, we're not supposed to have over 500, but they're not CO. Do we have clarity yet?
I prepared a memo on that about a year or so ago. I updated it end of last year, it hasn't changed since then, we're still a little over 500. The, I know the community development office is working through a marketing analysis to try to address that issue, and I can certainly provide you with a copy of that list of all the pending projects.
But does that, what does that include? Everything that's being built now?
Everything that's being built now and that's in the hopper.
And that's in the hopper as well?
Yes.
For a total of 519, if I remember correctly?
It was, it was less than 520, it was between 500 and 520.
And that's with everything that's in the pipeline?
Yeah. Well, yeah, in the DC1 area. There are projects being proposed outside the DC1 area.
But the DC, the 500-unit cap is only applicable to the DC1 zone.
Right.
So anything out of there, the Railroad Avenue overlay district, that's not subject to the 500-unit capture.
I'll send that, that table to you.
Thank you.
Is that something that the board is discussing or is that on the brigos?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss legal discussion regarding site plan approvals?
So moved.
Second.
Justin, can we kill the mics?